Good evening and welcome to the October 19, 2020, meeting of the Goffstown Select Board. I'd like to call a meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back in person conducting these meetings. It was interesting doing the virtual meetings, but it's good to be back in person. The first item of business that we have to take up is the acceptance and correction of minutes.
You don't have to do the remote announcement.
Oh, wait a minute. Did I skip it? I did. Announcement to read on the Safer at Home meeting announcement. Effective June 16, 2020, Governor Sununu issued emergency order number 52, which ended the state of New Hampshire's stay-at-home order and changed to a Safer at Home advisory. As chairman of the Goffstown Select Board, in accordance with the Safer at Home advisory, the governor's state of emergency and related emergency orders, I am conducting this meeting of the Goffstown Select Board in person, participating appropriate social distancing consistent with state and national public health guidelines. The Goffstown Select Board continues to provide public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. For those members of the public that are staying in their homes or places of residences, public participation continues to be available by telephone. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following telephone number, area code 603-766-5646, and using the participate code 785645, followed by the pound sign. If anyone has a problem with the telephone access, please call 603-384-3624 for assistance. For the benefit of those members of the public that may be listening to the meeting by telephone, all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So we'll start the meeting by taking roll call of attendance. Colas Adams.
Kelly Boyer.
Peter Georgantis.
Mark Lemay.
Chet Bowen.
Thank you. Now we can move on to the acceptance and correction of minutes. We have minutes from September 28, 2020, both public and non-public, and minutes from 10:05, 2020, public and non-public. Let's take these September 28, 2020, public and non-public first.
Make the motion. We accept the minutes 9:28, 2020, public and non-public as submitted.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mark. Are there any discussion or corrections, board members? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion passes 500. Now we have the October 5, 2020, public and non-public minutes.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion. We do the October 5, 2020, public and non-public minutes with corrections if need be.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Second by Chet. Any discussion on the motion or corrections to the minutes from any of the board members? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 That motion passes 500. Next comes announcements. I do have one announcement, a very important announcement. This is an important notice to all District 5 Bartlett School voters. District 5 polling location, normally at Bartlett Elementary School, has moved to Mountain View Middle School on 41 Lauren Lane for the Tuesday, November 3, 2020, New Hampshire State General, which is the presidential election day. The purpose of relocating the polling location is due to the anticipation of a large voter turnout and concerns for the safety of all voters and poll workers due to concerns for the novel coronavirus COVID-19. District Number 1 High School voters will still vote at the high school. The polls in both locations will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Question?
Yes, Peter.
Has the notice just gone out?
They were to be mailed last week. At the end of the week, they did go out, and I'll confirm that with Kathy. And then we also worked with the school district to get all of their reader boards updated with that information as well, and they said they would do that.
I haven't seen one come. Have you, Mark?
No.
So obviously they haven't.
Yep. I'll check on that.
Okay. So that went specifically to all the registered voters in District 5?
It went to all the residents in District 5. We did not limit it to District 5 or to registered voters. We sent it to all and kind of did what they, the mailways proposed, which was saturation method, so to make sure we got everybody in that district.
Thank you, Derek.
And you do have one more announcement at the next page.
Okay, go ahead, Derek. Please. Go ahead.
Okay. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has announced the annual fall drawdown of lakes and ponds controlled by dams owned by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Glen Lake or Greg Falls on the Piscataquag River in Goffstown will be drawn down on October 31st, 1.5 inches from full normal level. Any rainfall during the period of drawdown could affect the start of a drawdown. The depth of the drawdown is not from the current level, but is from the normal full river level. Because of the drought conditions the state has been experiencing through the summer, the levels of many of these lakes are already a foot or more below full. As a result, on Saturday, October 31st, a release will be made from Greg's Falls Dam in Goffstown to provide an opportunity for canoeing and kayaking in the Piscataquag River downstream. This release will begin at 11:00 a.m. Lake drawdowns are conducted each fall to reduce winter ice damage to shoreline properties and to reduce spring flooding. Drawdowns also give property owners the opportunity to conduct any necessary repairs to their waterfront property, provided they first secure a permit from the NHDES Wetlands Bureau at area code 603-271-2147.
Thank you, Derek. Yeah, it was interesting to note that due to the drought, the levels that we saw prior to these rains were actually about the same as the drawdown level, so when people saw it come back up, that was just because of the normal fall range. You will be seeing it go back down again. Thank you, Derek.
Have we made the Halloween announcement? I don't remember if we did that last week.
We did, but we can announce it again for sure. Halloween in Goffstown is going to occur on October 31st.
From 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There is information on the town's Facebook and website with guidelines to protect the health of people participating, as well as motorists and just general COVID guidelines that have been put out by the town.
So we hope that families can enjoy it, but certainly practice good safety when you're out there. Thank you, Derek and Peter. 610 is our first public comment opportunity. Is anyone in the audience who'd like to make public comment or anybody on the line, Derek, that you see?
Yes, I am going to unmute the number ending 8239. If you could identify yourself and provide your public comment.
This is David Pierce, 21 Mill Street.
Good evening.
Am I coming through?
You are.
Yes. I'm representing Friends of the Goffstown Rail Trail, and I'm happy to announce to the board that a grant that was applied for last June with the cooperation, with the permission of the board, has been awarded to the Friends of the Rail Trail. This is in regard to a project that will be done in the late summer or early fall of next year. And it is the section between Henry Bridge Road to Danus Park Road, a half mile of construction. So I just wanted to announce that to the board. At this point, I'm waiting, the grant recipients are waiting for the governor and the executive council to release the funds, which won't occur until March. At that point, I will come back before the board and ask for you to formally accept the donation of trail improvement. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the update, Dave. That's very good news indeed. Are there any questions from board members for David on the grant?
Just congratulations on getting the grant.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, board.
Thank you, David. Thank you for your work on that. Next, we have the police chief. Good evening, chief. This is tab 5.
Yeah, both should work.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all. Couple of quick things. First is looking to see, we, earlier this year, we applied for the highway safety grants that we normally do. You'll know last year, we weren't, we were not awarded any. Apparently, we did too well on preventing accidents and DBYs, so they didn't find the need for us to have any. This year, we applied again, and we are awarded $13,173 in funding. These were specific to the speed-related issues, distracted driving-related issues, and mobilization-related issues. So with normal year-to-year when we get these, I'm just asking the board if they're willing to accept this grant from the state and let us. It starts from October 1st to September 30th of next year. That's their grant cycle. We just haven't, you know, once this gets through, we'll have to work with the state in order to make sure it's all set to start deploying the officers out there.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for chief, please?
What does that mean, mobilization?
So the mobilization is when the state puts together a statewide click-it-or-ticket St. Patty's Day-type thing, Fourth of July. So they'll put out throughout the year a statewide, they call it a mobilization of, you know, we're going to focus on distracted driving today. So those ones, part of this grant is, we don't decide on those ones, which ones we choose, you know, to go out. They'll say, these 10 dates, you have to go out and do this to be part of this grant. So that's, that's part of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Want a motion?
Make a motion.
Yes, please. Anything, a motion? Well, you go ahead, Kelly.
I'll make a motion that we accept the $13,173 in funding from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Grants.
Second. Thank you. A motion made by Kelly, seconded by Peter, to accept the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? And then I'll call a roll and vote yes?
Yes.
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 The motion passes 500.
The next thing was, we were approached by a local business, Lights Up Seasonal Lighting. It's owned by Patrick Turcotte, who's from Goffstown, who lives in Gofftown, and his business is based here. They're an organization that goes around and puts Christmas lights up all over the state. He's approached us and wants to support us, the Gofftown Police Department, and donate his lights and services to our police department. So he's willing to come in, buy the lights, put them on our police department. You'll see in your packet, I have his workup here.
Yep.
And then after Christmas is done, he'll come in and take them down, which I think is a good thing for us, because usually we do it ourselves, and they end up falling down and get frozen into the ground in Santa Fe, Georgia, till about June. So this makes it a little bit easier for our personnel. You'll see in the packet and in the memo here that his donation value is $3,375 to do this service. So I'm asking the board to accept this donation. He's been calling us, he's been calling us several times to see when this is all set. He's ready to put them up. It's up to you guys if he wants to accept that donation.
I'll make the motion that we accept the offer and the donation from Lights Up Seasonal Lighting for the police department.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 The motion passes 500. Chief, did you miss one on the K9?
I have it right here. I'm sorry. I was out of order. Apologize. I guess I was saving the best for last. We have a really exciting, different opportunity here at the police department that I'm looking for your approval. You know, as most of the board knows, and if you don't, the Gofftown Police Department was the first police department in the state of New Hampshire to have a K9 program, as well as an Explorer program. It's pretty ingrained in our history and our culture here. Tragically, in 2018, we lost our last K9. We usually have two patrol K9s. We lost our last one to cancer. We have not been able to put two more dogs on the road, mainly due to personnel. We don't have the officers right now to send to 16 weeks of training in Boston. So thinking outside of the box, we've been seeing this new trend coming around where they're using a different approach of police K9 that aren't a patrol dog that goes out and, you know, patrols for drugs or tracks people, but this one's actually called a trained comfort dog. They are certified to be out in the public. They're certified to not, hopefully not bite. That's what I was told. But essentially, they're used for, they're used for a lot of different scenarios, one of which is community policing, bridging that gap, helping us foster more communication with our, with our community. One thing I'm thinking about with this is going to the elderly community. We have an Asian demographic in this, in this town, that we can go to all the different, you know, places around town, the Hillsborough County Nursing Home, Villager. This is something that can help break that barrier, can help lighten up someone's day as having a puppy there or a dog. Also, we've seen this been around the country right now, where they're using these dogs to help with anxiety, with victims of crimes, with, you know, different investigations will come in, and we can have the dog there to help victims, especially children, kind of loosen up and be able to explain what's going on in their lives. So sudden death calls, they're using these dogs to help with the family, kind of take a little bit of a softer approach. What makes it special for us and unique for us right now is that we have an opportunity where the Gofftown Police Association, who doesn't normally do this, but is willing to donate this dog and donate the cost associated this year, so there's zero impact to our budget this year. That's the plan. And really, what I'm looking for the, for the board to, to, you know, approve is the donation of the dog and approve me to welcome the dog by adopting it to our agency and being part of our team. I am looking to put together a pretty robust policy and have a plan of assigning it to an officer with potentially having two to three assistants that can work with this dog. So we are not handcuffed to just one officer who might be on vacation, who might be working night shift. This dog will be available with different, one primary handler, but one or two or three different officers that can assist in, with this, with this dog. The other thing is I've already talked to the superintendent, and he is on board with this. He thinks this will be a great thing for the school district. He's already talked to me about potentially having the dog in the special education rooms. Really was looking forward to seeing if we could put this dog in the pep rallies, in the, in the different functions they have throughout the year. So that's kind of what we're looking to do. I'm estimating the cost to be somewhere around $1,000 to $1,500 per year for the operational cost of this dog. That's with food, vet bills. The veterinarians that we use in Gofftown has already told us to donate their services to us, but not the actual vaccines or whatever they need for their own. They'll give, you know, they'll charge us for cost. So the only other thing that I am not anticipating, I got to talk to the union about, is we do have in the contract a K9 stipend for the K9 officers. I would ask that, we're not anticipating deploying this dog until next year, probably around January, February, or March anyway, so I'm going to talk to the union about whether or not they consider this a K9 as far as that stipend, because traditionally, we have patrol dogs that we put out that's different, where they're, you know, their, the handler itself is being trained with the dog all the time. So that's one thing that I got to talk to them about. And speaking of training, the good news here is, we don't send an officer to 16 weeks of training here. We don't lose the personnel. Sergeant Weeks, who is our K9 handler or our trainer, if you don't know him, he has credentials where he's trained hundreds of dogs across the state. He's trained all of our K9s here since he's been here. He's part of the New England Association for K9s. He is willing to basically train this dog on his own and get it to a point where it's ready to be introduced to a handler, and then they're going to take it and go down and get a, I guess it's called a K9 Good Citizenship Award or certification, which basically says that the dog's okay to be out in the public. So we have a lot of things going here. We have a lot of good people that are stepping up to help out to get this program started. I think it's a really good thing for our agency and our community. So I'm looking for the board's approval for this donation and to accept the dog as the newest member of our team.
Yeah, I think it's a great program, chief. I know what comfort those, those animals can provide for people in dire situations, and I think it's a great, great effort that you're putting forward. Thank you. Questions?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, if we decide to do this, I would really love to see a community poll for picking the name of the dog if it doesn't already have one.
That's part of the plan.
I watched Manchester's, and it was hilarious and awesome, and they did a really great job there.
Yeah.
But I do have some logistical questions, per usual. Thanks for covering the ongoing cost. Do you know, it's going to be assigned to an officer, so that would mean it would live with that officer, that officer would be responsible for general care and things like that. Is that correct?
Yes. So the idea would be typically, the officer would be assigned the dog, and then it would go home and live with the officer. We're tossing up a different approach, where if we have one main primary handler who's responsible for the dog, we're trying to figure out if we can use... responsible for the dog, we're trying to figure out if we can use a couple of people that can help out with that dog, where if there's nothing proactive for the dog to do, to go out into the community, what do we do with it? We don't want to put them in the car and drive around for twelve hours like the patrol K-9. We could, but there's a conversation about, would it be able to stay at the PD for a couple hours during the day, or we can all take care of it while we're there. But mainly, yes, it would be with one specific officer.
Okay. So then my next question would be the vehicle. Do we have to do any modifications either at the police department, like you said, if it's there for a couple hours?
So, to my knowledge, this dog does not need any outfitting like the other patrol K-9s do. As you know, those patrol K-9s are aggressive, so they're not really... They're made to be in a cage. They're a working dog. That's how they're trained. My understanding is this dog can be put in either a smaller cage or can be... I don't want to say this with getting myself in trouble, because I'm not... But, I mean, my understanding is this dog could ride in the car without having any special cage that we have for your traditional police K-9 dog.
Okay. Just like a standard dog seatbelt and things like that.
Because I don't want to say something to the animal lovers out in the public that would say, "You should have them in a cage," or "You should not have them in a cage," so...
Yeah. No, I just know the requirements are different, so that clears that up. And then what about the liability furthermore? Is there any kind of police department, you know, list of liability within that?
My understanding of the liability is that the dog is considered equipment, and it's covered under Primex's liability insurance. And talking to finance, and basically, they told me that there wasn't going to be any increase to our liability insurance due to this low-risk housing ward dog.
Okay.
And because we've had two other patrol dogs on our insurance, I think it's pretty much level at that point.
Okay.
I would say that there is going to be a point that I've been tossed... We're looking at getting specific health insurance for the dog, which is different than the liability that we'll have to look at at some point. But I guess that's for, like, major emergencies, for surgeries or something to that nature.
Yeah. I'm familiar, and I'm pretty sure Primex offers that anyways for employees.
Cost. I'd like to make the motion if we're all set.
Yep. Can I just... Chief, have you considered, like, sort of like, meet and greet to let citizens, young and all the like, kind of come out for a public relations kind of goodwill thing to meet the dog?
So that's going to be the plan. The plan is, we're going to use social media to have its own page, and there is a thought of having the public vote in, their voice on what the dog's name should be. And then it's going to be, here's a day in life growing up at Gostown Police and the town of Gostown. And part of this venture is, once the puppy's ready to be out in the main public, I think that it's going to be, let's see if you can find the puppy. Where is he today, or where is she today? And meet and greet, and that's the idea. We want this dog to be, not only for our agency, for the people inside, but also the entire community, and have them meet. So, yeah.
That's great. I'm sorry, how old is the dog?
We have...
Oh, you don't have it yet.
We're looking to buy one pretty soon, yeah. We're going to start with a puppy. I know that.
Oh, good.
And then we're going to... I can tell you that the thought processes definitely have the dog available that if some entity or somewhere around the community would like to have the dog present, we can get the dog there. I would love to see the dog at voting. Probably not in November, but definitely in March. But, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we could get the dog ready to go in November. I'm not sure. That's pretty aggressive. I think that definitely, I would love to see the dog out in the community. You know, if we were ever able to get to the senior lights tour in December, which I'm not sure we would, I would love to be able to have that there, but we'll get there. But, yeah, definitely, that's the plan.
That's great, Chief. I think a lot of goodwill can come from this.
I'll make the motion, we accept the donation of a comfort dog to the police department.
I'll second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Kelly. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 The motion passes five zero zero.
And, do you want me to go back to the current date now?
No, we're doing...
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda is the DPW Director.
Hey, folks. How are you?
Hey, Adam.
Hi. So, as you see on the agenda tonight, I've got a good news from the New Hampshire Beautiful. They are the nonprofit that's supported by the New Hampshire Beverages Association, beverage distributors of New Hampshire, and I believe the New Hampshire Grocers Association. We have budgeted with our Skidsteer purchase this year, estimated five thousand dollars for a grant. We've received this grant a couple times in the past. They help out with purchases for transfer stations and DPWs and load type cleanups and that sort of thing. So we had applied, as you know, a couple meetings back, and they had their board meeting a few weeks ago, and they approved the grant for five thousand dollars. So happy to report that our budget amount stayed true.
I got a question.
Sure, go ahead.
The paperwork here says the town of Whitefield.
I underline that, too.
I think I verify, I think they're not the kind of stack of them to issue out.
Details.
Details.
Details, right, right. We'll go steal five thousand from Whitefield, too. I should knock on their door.
I'm sure the select board in Whitefield wouldn't be happy about that, except for their money.
Someone like to make a motion on this?
This is great. I'll make a motion that we accept the grant from the New Hampshire Beautiful for five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made by Kelly, seconded by Chuck. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 That motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Good work.
Thank you.
Now, we're at tab seven, which is the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. And you have your committee meeting scheduled. Wednesday at 6:00 PM, the library trustees are meeting remote.
Yes, but I'll have to... Is it six, or I moved from six? It's usually 6:30. I'll look on the calendar.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Okay. And then at 7:00 PM, Parks and Recs Commission is meeting at the Parks and Rec Center?
Yeah, I have that.
And then, just a reminder, you do have a board meeting next Monday at 6:00 PM, and we do plan to have a joint meeting with the Budget Committee starting at 7:00 PM.
We have a planning board meeting scheduled for this week, a special one.
Did that get finalized?
Well, I don't know. I got sent the message on it.
Then, okay, then that may have occurred after this went to print, because I know Joanne was working with the Planning Board Chair on that. So I would say then, if you did get notice of that, then there would be a Planning Board meeting on Thursday.
Right.
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Next page, you have your consent agenda, employee status report for police officer new hire, crossing guard new hire, Parks and Recs ground maintenance new hire, and then you have two pole workers' status change, expected to exceed IRS annual limit. You have rights to inter in Shirley Hill Cemetery, Section 1, Lot 33, West Lawn Cemetery, Section 1991, Lot 33, West Lawn Expansion Cemetery, Section S3, Lots 175, 176, and 177, and Shirley Hill Cemetery, Section 3, Lots 120 and 121. You have event permits from Total Image Running for their gobble-wobble 5K race on Saturday, November 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00. The start and end is at Parks and Rec. You have the Granite State Health and Fitness Foundation Glen Lake Swim Race on August 15th, 2021, at 8:00 AM. This is at Parks and Rec Center and in Glen Lake. And then you have a disbursement voucher from the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund. This was previously approved by the board on October 7th of 2019, and that needs the signature of the Chair.
Recommend we approve the consent agenda as of printed.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
I got a second by Kelly. Motion is made by Peter, seconded by Kelly, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 The motion passes five zero zero.
At tab 7C, you have the quarterly budget transfer request for the benefit cash out. The amount is thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget transfer request for thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Second. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 That motion passes five zero zero. Thank you.
At 7D, at your last meeting, the fire chief presented updated emergency operation plan. At this time, I'd asked for a formal adoption by the board.
I'll make the motion, we adopt the emergency management director presentation, the emergency management plan there.
Second. All right, so we've got some additional...
Yeah, there's some additional resolution language that, if you could include that in there that way, because a portion of this was through a FEMA grant, we want to ensure that we do have all the necessary language, part of the motion.
So the motion was made by Peter. Was it you, Peter, right? And...
Right.
Seconded by Mark. I'll read the rest of it, if that's okay, Derek.
Yep.
Is hereby resolved by the town of Gostown, New Hampshire, that whereas emergency response to critical incidents, whether natural or human caused, requires integrated professional management, and whereas unified command of such incidents is recognized as the management model to maximize the public safety response, and whereas the National Incident Management System, herein referred to as NIMS, has been identified by the federal government as being a requisite emergency management system for all political subdivisions, and whereas failure to adopt NIMS as a requisite emergency management system may preclude reimbursement to the political subdivision, that is, the town, for costs expended during and after a declared emergency or disaster, and for training and preparation for such disasters and emergencies. Therefore, it shall be the public policy of this municipality to adopt the NIMS concept of emergency planning and unified command. It shall further be the policy of this municipality to train public officials responsible for emergency management. So that's the entire motion with some of the resolutions. We did have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion and the resolution? Has it been read?
No.
Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 That motion passes five zero zero. Thank you.
At tab 7E, you have the vote on the proposed traffic ordinance. You did hold the two public hearings for this on September 14th and September 28th. Tonight is the 21st day after the second public hearing, so this would be the last day to adopt if the board so wished. How would you like to proceed on the traffic ordinance?
I'd like to take action on it tonight.
I'll make a motion that we not adopt the ordinance for the stop sign at Wallace Road.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Peter, to not...
Just my quick comment, due to the input we got from the public.
Again, this is a motion to not adopt the ordinance. We got a lot of public comment on this one over the two requisite public hearings. There is not one single person who gave public comment that supported it. They're all against it, so it only seems prudent that we...
But we need to recognize as a board that there still is a problem there.
Well, first going to deal with this. So that's the motion. And is there any further discussion, because we want to take action on it tonight and be done with this and move on? Because, you're right, there still is an issue there, but let's deal with this matter of business first. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call a roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion passes five zero zero. And I agree with Peter, and I assume the rest of the board concur, is that we do need to talk about... The VHB report did talk about some incremental changes that could be done at that roundabout location to improve safety and efficiencies, and I think we need to come up with a plan as for board, as to how we're going to deal with that. As I say, there were some incremental improvements. Each had a cost associated with them. Some were small costs, some were larger costs. But I think at some point, Derek, we need to come up with a plan as to how we're going to move forward with this, to bring about some improvements to that situation.
Can we add this to the action matrix, please?
Yes, absolutely.
It's not on there.
I think we need to... I think we need to get the DPW Director involved in this.
Oh, yes.
See, because we're coming into budget season, let's start just... We need to put in money to get it done, and we're just going to get it done.
Yeah. Is there a cost? Some of the improvements around the order, four, five, six, seven thousand dollars. Fairly small money, but nonetheless, some money that we need to make sure properly budgeted for, and that we can roll it out in a unified and cohesive manner.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Derek.
At tab 7F, you have an RFP from the Parks and Rec Department. This is to construct a fourteen-foot by twenty-four-foot shed at the sports complex, and sealed bids would be due on November 10th at 2:00 PM. We're just seeking authorization to release that RFP.
I'll make the motion, we authorized the Parks and Rec Director to release an RFP for the fourteen-by-twenty-four equipment shed, or whatever you want to call it, but storage shed at the new sports complex.
A motion by Peter to close the RFP, seconded by Chuck. I have a question for you, Rick. Are you sure that building's the size that you need, or not going to be back here in two or three years saying, "I wish it had made a little bigger"? And how did you arrive at that size?
Good question. Well, everything always comes down to money. And for the timeframe period that we have for the Phase 1, the fourteen-by-twenty-four will be sufficient for the years that we have ahead of us. Obviously, we have a much larger complex, which has bathrooms, concessions, and a storage in a Phase 2, 3 concept. So to get us to that point, the fourteen-by-twenty-four will be sufficient. What our attempt to do is, we're going to put two garage door openings on it. No windows, no nothing. That way, lock it up nice and tight. But at least that way there, if folks want to do, use it as a semi-concession type of stand, a thing, you still will be able to use that, that way there. So it'll be a multi-purpose type of building. The storage will really be like year-end, when it comes winter time, we'll chuck it, go put everything in there, and then come spring, we'll, you know, during their seasons, we'll work around it. So it should work for now.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Thank you. I didn't see any not to exceed limits in the proposal, Rick. What's...
I don't understand your question.
Not to exceed, like, a budget amount? What was the budgeted cost?
We're working within the hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget for the CIP request, and this is always within that spec.
Okay.
Anything else?
But just to clarify, Rick, you had multiple projects that were part of that hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes.[1654.83] It didn't, that project didn't go out as like one massive bit. It's, there's pieces built inside of it.
Okay.
Kelly, did you want to add a not to exceed?
Well, we don't know that, go ahead.
My point, my point on doing it, if you do it that way, you say not to exceed, that's where the bids come in at. So if you have a, if you have a don't exceed, there's where the bids will come in at that price.
I get you.
You know, so you're almost better doing it this way and see what people come up with instead of putting the do not exceed. It's been the experience of the past, you know, they'll come in a dollar less than what they do not exceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the budget number was.
We're still doing, I'm sorry, we're still doing very well within that requested amount.
I don't see that, I don't think that we need that, but if there is a multi-budgeted line for this grouping, when we get the bids, if we could kind of see what that leaves left before we accept something, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else here Rick? Thank you Rick.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So we had a motion.
I made the motion.
And a second to release the RFP. Any further discussion?
No.
I'll call a roll, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, the motion passes 5-0-0.
At TAB 7G, I'm going to ask Danielle to come up. You have the town auditor has prepared the MS 535. This is the financial report for the town for the year ending December 31st, 2019.
Good evening everyone.
Hi Danielle.
The MS 535, as you know, is kind of a snapshot comparing what actually happened in the prior year to what was budgeted and expected for our expenses and revenues. If we take a look at a synopsis, the town came in about 10.6% under the voted appropriations for the year. The encumbered funds are separate of that and they are listed on the fund equity page. The total general fund revenues came in about 26% over what we projected. We had a large increase in motor vehicles, we did better on some of our other lines as well in 2019. And the unassigned fund balance as of the 12/31/19 date was listed at $8.1 million. There's a few notes on there, just to consider, the fund balance includes approximately $1.3 million in uncollected funds that are still due to the town, those are property taxes and other items. And the 2019 figure also does not account for any 2020 voted expenditures of fund balance which were on the ballot, so that's an additional $825,000. But that number, that $8.1 million is the number that is available for tax rate setting and the number that is recognized by DRA. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Danielle?
No.
No.
We'd be seeking a motion to approve that 535 is presented.
Motion to approve the MS 535 is prepared by the town auditing firm, the Lansing.
Thank you Peter.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly, thank you Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call a roll, yes?
Yes.
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 That motion passes 5-0-0.
And that does require the signature of the full board, so that's in the boardroom.
Yes, if we all just sign that when we adjourn here, that'd be great.
Thank you.
And the final item I have tonight in TAB 7H is a 2020 tax rate estimate. Danielle and I have worked together to pull together all known data. This includes the approved appropriation, the revised estimated revenues that Danielle completed, as well as information from the MS 1. During the 2020 budget development and prepared for town meeting and the voters' guide and the deliberative session, we estimated that the town portion would be $8.58. Also during that, the select board proposed using $125,000 from fund balance at tax rate setting time. As you can see on the page right behind the cover page, right now, we are estimating the town tax rate will be at $8.31. This is due to the decision by the board to take CARES Act funding and take it directly into the general fund. It's also a result of the MS 1, the town valuation, coming in at about 1.3% increase where during budget preparation, we assumed an increase of 0.5%. So that is what is leading to that $8.31. And I guess the questions I have for the board is, do you want to use that $125,000 from fund balance that you used during the budget, during the budget season last year? Do you want to use more, do you want to use less? And then we'd ask for either authorization to allow the finance director to set the tax rate and with a targeted tax rate, or to bring back to you next Monday night, the final tax rate.
Chair.
Questions?
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it next week, the final tax rate, but I'd also, I'd also would like to use that $125,000.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. Set the consensus to the board.
Yep.
So if you remain with $125,000, we're pretty confident that the tax rate would be $8.31, but what Danielle can work with DRA this week to finalize, know what the final overlay numbers are, and we'll bring you that back for final approval on Monday night.
And we had proposed, Tommy, last year, $8.58 if everything passed, so we're actually coming in under the number.
Yes.
By quite a bit, so.
Yes, but it will, just so you're aware, it will be an increase over, because right now, we're at $8.14. So it will be an increase, it just won't be as large as was anticipated.
Thank you Derek, any other discussion on this item? And we need a motion to give some direction to the finance director?
And I guess I don't need a motion if I'm going to bring it back to you, but it seems like we'll target the $8.31.
$8.31.
Bring it back.
And bring that back to you next Monday for final approval.
Okay, we'll take it up to then, thank you.
Well, I think you have department updates next, you don't have any written ones in the packet.
Okay, department updates, chief for fire and EMD. Fire and EMD, that chief.
Guys don't have to fight over it, you know?
How many chiefs?
I only have a couple of things this evening. Nice to see everyone again. As you know, as the emergency management director, we continue to watch our COVID numbers throughout the state and I think as everyone here knows, the numbers have been trending up within the state and within the community. Some of those are in town, happen tied to long-term care facilities and then those numbers coming off the state list. So right now, if you look at one of the nursing homes in town, they actually show zero. The state still does report them, they haven't closed out those cases yet. So we'll see those numbers trending back down. And then just a good reminder to everyone to stay diligent when social distancing and wearing masks and washing our hands, it's just a great reminder every once in a while. All right, the fire department, we're all remain safe and healthy. We're working on finalizing our budget for the budget season coming up here in the next few weeks. We want to make sure that we remind everyone in the public with burning permits, we do still require burning permits, keep an eye on the local fire dangers and if you can or cannot burn due to the drought conditions that we are still seeing, even though we did have a lot of rain last weekend, we are still in a drought. So just a front reminder, make sure you're calling the fire department to make sure you can burn. Any questions for me?
That's it?
That's it?
Thank you Chief of Fire.
You're very welcome.
The other chief, Chief of Police.
All right, thank you again. For our agency, we're doing well. We are seeing an uptick, as the fire chief might have said, in the state with COVID, so we are trying to stay healthy. We've had a couple of people who have gone out on a little bit of quarantine just to verify, make sure they're okay. So we're just really monitoring that. Overall though, the agency's doing really well. Staffing levels, of course, I told you last time we met that on paper, we were fully staffed and the next day, the gentleman who was in background didn't get through the polygraph test. So I'm here to tell you that we still have one more opening that we're going to try to fill, but we are not lowering our standards for our community, so we are still have that rigorous process that we're not going to, we're not going to lower. But other than that, seems like we're doing pretty well, the community, we had, I actually wanted to report that the spray painter gentleman who was, gentleman, I guess I could call him, that was spray painting all of Main Street in Purnarville, threw some really great police work, we caught him and there's a warrant pending for his arrest, so.
Oh, great.
People, that's, that's a pretty good thing, so other than that, everything's been pretty well, so.
The same person who got Sully's in other locations?
Yes. So it seems like he was on his way from Purnarville into Goffstown and decided that he would tag the side of Howe's and then Sully's and a couple of other places, so we will take to.
Good work, thank you.
Figure out who that was and take care of it, so that's pretty good news, so.
Good police work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Other than that, we're all set, thank you.
Thank you Chief. Adam, are you still with us?
Yep, there you go.
Adam, do you want to give us an update?
I can, I tried to swap up phones, hopefully it sounds a little better than the other caller.
Much better.
Okay, so in no particular order, put in a plug, we've still got vehicle bids being accepted for our surplus equipment through the 22nd at 1:00 PM. If anybody's interested, check the website under the bids page or on our Facebook page, we've got some pictures and info. The fuel system work, as you recall or may not recall, it's been a bit now, when DES came in to do a little inspection as part of the preview of that project, the tenure inspection, they gave us a list of corrective actions that need to be completed as well. So we've been working back and forth and fire's been involved. We've got an approved set of corrective actions right now that fire has signed off on. We're waiting to hear back from the contractor who's got to get those approved by DES before they can give us the final go-ahead for the project. So waiting to hear back if DES has any other comments, right now, I'm expecting it's going to be a smallest change order, but we'll see what they say before we come to you with a number. We do have money in several different areas, different budget lines that we could move around to make that change order happen, but we really don't have a choice on this project. We've got to get the inspections done, but we certainly need to get the corrective actions done as well. Project wise, Shirley Hill Road was paved last week, driveways, intersections, and then Kennedy Hill, that little section by the farm at Kennedy Hill, will be hopefully paved tomorrow, as long as the weather holds up. Tyler Drive, we've been delayed a couple of times with the sidewalk curving contractor to come in and reset the curving, that was all pulled, so we thought we were making good progress and now we've kind of been sitting at a standstill there waiting on them, but they're now scheduled to come back in next week and hopefully we'll follow right up behind them and try to get them buttoned up as best we can and get the paving finished there for the sidewalk in the road. Then in Du Close, superstructures were lowered and ready for road grinding over there. We will mobilize to start drainage work on Du Close tomorrow and then see if that allows us to carry it through to Eden and kind of play the lead by year from there, might turn into a, if it's a mild winter, turn into a project for the upper Warren section, but at least we're going to make some headway down at the Du Close end. Equipment wise, Truck 371 is the curbside packer truck that's been out of service that ended up needing an engine repair under warranty from Peterbilt. That is back in service, got picked up on Friday, will be back in service tomorrow, I should say. But on the TS, we received a trailer load pile of trash back because Trailer 388, which has one of those walking live floors to offload, was not able to offload the trash, so had to come back full, talked to the trailer manufacturer and they think it's going to have to be emptied and some of the flooring at least removed if not replaced, so it's going to be a significant little job on that trailer, I'll give you more info as I get it. But we're trying to take some lessons learned before we, the last item we have to bid for the year is another one of these trailers and we want to see if there's anything we need to change in our spec. You might recall a couple of years ago, we had a trailer floor that needed to be redone, which is, you plan for that kind of thing, but this trailer's got heavy-duty steel, it looks like it's a corrosion issue that's not mixing well with the municipal solid waste, you know, the trash itself is corroding the steel faster than the aluminum deck plates, so even though they're more heavy-duty, they're not lasting as long. And then finally, the last thing I had was I received news from Derek that we had a complaint, I guess NHDOT's contractor had placed some equipment on the rail trail the last couple nights, I contacted Brock, the food and work for the meeting, and they said they will no problem get that moved off the rail trail, and I believe more importantly, they're going to be finishing up their paving work on 114 tonight, if all goes well.
Great.
That's all, that's all I've got.
So Adam, I want to thank you for moving quickly as you could with the repaving work. You know, the weather certainly gave you a few challenges, a couple of curveballs, I assume, as you're trying to get that work done. I see a lot of chatter on social media, it's one of those, you just can't win, some people want it done during the day, some want it done during the night, some don't want it done at all, everybody wants it done, but I appreciate your efforts to get it done as quickly as you could, thank you.
You keep struggling there, thanks.
Anything from the library, Kelly?
I do. Library is currently still in phase 4 of reopening, which is going really well, they've had an increase in circulation of materials, but they want to encourage more circulation of children's materials, so just a reminder, you can call or online, they'll put together book bundles for you or any, any other materials that you want to get, and then you can do contactless pickup, which is great. And this past Saturday, they had their community forum, which was pretty heavily attended, and the next step is they're going to make the information available on the website and their second forum will be held in January.
Thank you Kelly. Derek, town administration?
Yes, we've been working with the town clerk to prepare for the elections. Kathy's been very busy, we're fortunate that we've had a lot of part-time election clerk help. Rick has been kind enough as well to lend us for a few hours each week, Aaron, to come over and help out to get those absentee ballots entered into the system and out. Finance has been very busy finishing up the 2019 audit, the MS 535 is kind of that near the completion, and then we'll be seeing the final paperwork on that soon, as well as all the grant paperwork and the 2021 budget entry with all the departments. IT has been very busy, they're doing the change over to Office 365 and they've started that process to get department heads over to Microsoft Teams and we'll be following through with that, that process, but that's pretty much it.
Has anybody else had problems with getting online? I can't get rested again, they won't let me on.
I will, I'll put a trouble ticket, I know, I know a couple of members that had issues and I just given contact information to IT team, so I'll have one of them give you a call.
Let me know.
Yeah, I had problems Peter, they were very helpful, got me up and going about an hour.
That was before, but it's just all of a sudden, it doesn't work either on my phone or on my laptop, I don't know why.
Okay, I'll, I'll have them get in touch with you.
Thank you Derek, all right, let's see.
And then, did you want Rick?
Correct.
I'm sorry Rick. You know, and I got you right.
I won't speak, because usually when I say something, it's always wrong, so.
Well, you're already, you're already up here, so it skipped my mind.
Anyhow, we're doing well. This is the last week of our instructional soccer program, so this will be that final week programmatically. Had, we did the pumpkin hunt this past Saturday, put out about 220 pumpkins and we got about 115 back, tickets back, you know what I mean, that kind of thing. So it's about average, you know, we probably get about 150-ish back. We didn't really kind of put it out on social media, we kind of did keep it kind of low-key type of thing. We were a little nervous if it did go on social media, would it bring in too many people, all that crazy stuff, but bottom line, it still, I think it still went pretty darn good, and I thank all the commissioners for getting out there on that rainy soaking Friday night and hiding the pumpkins. Our next program that we're going to be getting into will be our little instructional floor hockey program for Kidney and Garner's, that'll be starting up soon. Then we will, the next big one will be the youth basketball program, which we have no idea what'll happen there, that's, that's a lot to do with community gymnasiums and stuff like that, so we'll see where that goes. Facility wise, let's see, we're still waiting for the contractor to come in and do the fencing over at the, at the sports complex, so there's really that left and then the shed, having that put in, and then pretty much after that, everything is pretty, pretty in place, and I would be happy to do a final report on that with you guys once we get to that point. The pools, we, pool cover went in at Roy Park today, pool cover's going over at Barnard tomorrow, so those will be installed first time, cross our fingers, see how that works out. Other than that, all the fields have been seeded, fertilized, now we're waiting for the shutdown of irrigation and we'll go from there. Any questions?
Hey, thanks Rick.
Thank you, have a good night.
Let's see, we're on select board discussion, new business, new business, Peter?
Political signs are getting out of control on public, on our town property. I can tell you over by the rail trail and you go up to Henry Bridge, over at the sports complex, there's a bunch of political signs there. So around town, there's an RSA against putting them in the right of ways, the town right-of-ways, and I think, as I've mentioned to you.
Well, they can be, they actually can be put in the town right-of-ways as long as the adjacent property owner gives permission, so at the sports complex, the town would not give permission. Nancy has been going out twice a week and it's very easy and very clear to pull them out of the roundabouts, the waterfront, any of the town buildings. I will have her double-check those and I'll have her go out with what we have for surveys of the property, then if it is clearly on town property, then we will have her remove them.
Now, is fire station property on Tarrell Hills, that whole corner belong to the town?
I assume it is, but I will, we'll check with the fire chief and we'll look at what we have on file. If we feel it's on town property, we'll remove it and then candidates can come and pick them up at town hall.
I saw signs in, over by the Grassmere Cemetery.
Okay.
They've got them across from, across from the Grassmere Town Hall.
Okay.
So, I mean.
I'll add those.
They're getting a little out of control, there's so many signs out there.
Yep, I'll add those, I'll have her add those to her checks.
Anybody else have any new business coming for the board? Old business, the atron matrix? Let's see, got, I think a couple of things, they're just kind of dragging along here, the personnel plan and policies.
And then I also have to add the Wallace. And then I also have to add the Wallace Road Roundabout to the action matrix, so.
Thank you.
And Carlos, how is that the covered, the bridge organization doing? Have they met yet?
They have not met.
They have not met. We have, I think we've gotten everybody sworn in, so we will schedule a meeting with them.
So next thing is to call the first meeting, elect a chair, chairperson. And from there, schedule, schedule their action out. Anything else? Anybody else? Derek, anything you?
No, nothing else.
Okay. And let's see, vehicles and equipment. Looks like the recycling truck, did we get it back? Looks like it's due back today.
Yeah, that was the one that Adam.
The motor came back Friday.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Didn't go back to work tomorrow.
Yeah. The six-wheel dump. What do we know about that? And then the hauler trailer.
The hauler trailer was the one that Adam also updated.
That's the one with the live bed, yeah. Okay, anything else?
I got a little concern on condos where I live, the Country Squire. Somebody filled the dumpsters over there with furniture, so they couldn't get any trash in. So you know where the trash ended up, in the recycling bins. So we kind of, we kind of got to keep an eye on that. I don't know if there's a way to slap their hands, or, you know what I'm saying, but.
I'm just going to, Adam's still on the line, unmute him in case he wanted to add anything.
We can certainly pull an audit over there if you think that's a recurring issue.
I had never seen it as bad as it was this time, because when they filled up the dumpster with furniture, there's no room to put the trash, so they're not going to take the full trash bags packed to their, they just threw them in the recycling bins. All the recycling bins are full of plastic bags and trash.
Yeah, not ideal for sure. Some of that, we're going to be able to catch, but you know, as the trucks come in, sometimes it's only what we see when it gets put on the ground, get pulled out.
Okay, let's just keep an eye on it.
We'll, we'll pull an audit in the next couple of weeks, maybe just see if it's something we might need to hammer down a little bit.
Okay, great. Thanks, Adam. Anything else from board? Okay, from the second public comment opportunity. Is there anyone in the audience for public comment? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone on the line?
No, there's not.
There's nobody on the line.
Make the motion, we go into non-public session on the RSA 91-a colon 32a1 discipline and be hiring.
Thank you. A motion by Peter, go into non-public.
Second.
Second by Kelly. It's a roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
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 A motion to go into non-public passes five zero zero. Thank you for everyone who's been watching this evening. We're going to go into non-public session. Stay safe, stay healthy, and thank you for, for tuning in tonight.